Welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council. It is August 21st, 2025. Madeline, you have our prayer and our pledge.
Thank you, Mayor. May we bow our heads, please? Dear Heavenly Father, we just come to you this evening just to say thank you, Lord. Thank you so much for things that we just take for granted every day of our lives, Lord, and these are blessings from you. Just being here, just living, breathing, we just thank you for that, Lord. And Lord, we thank you for all of our employees of the city, for the great job that you have allowed them the opportunity to do. We pray a special prayer for the medical people and the fire people that keep us safe, Lord. We thank you for that. There's just so many things that we can thank you for, Lord, that it's not enough time in the day, but all I can say is you're awesome. You're a miracle worker, Lord. You've made a miracle in my life with my health, going from not being able to do anything for myself to being able to speak here tonight, Lord, in your honor. I thank you. Thank you for, Lord, for, and bless the children as they can go into the school year, Lord, keep them safe. Bless our teachers and our administrators. Bless, special blessing for Dr. Duke as he leads this area of our city. And just keep our children safe, Lord, so much is happening. And Lord, bless the sick and the shut-in all over the world, Lord. Bless the people, especially our children that are homeless, Lord, in this type of weather. We just, and the elderly, we just ask a special blessing for them. And Lord, it's just, I'm just, I'm just too thankful, Lord, just too thankful. I, I can't thank you enough for my grandson that's coming, Lord, in December. And you blessed me to see his picture Tuesday, and he's just sucking his little thumb, Lord, just happy in that ultrasound, and just let him come into a, not a cruel world, Lord, but a safe world. And all the people that are in, that are hurting, that have had death, I lift up the Maxwell, Austin Maxwell family and the loss of his mother. And Lord, I lift up he and Clara as they just passed the anniversary of the death of their son. Lord, we just ask a special healing and comforting blessing on that family. And Lord, as we get ready to handle the business of our city, we ask that you move in the midst and allow us to do your will. This is my prayer that I ask in your darling son's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any public, anyone sign up for public comment?
No, sir.
We don't have any ceremonial items tonight, and I know he's watching on TV, I'm sure, right now, but my youngest is 13 tomorrow, so happy birthday, Drew. Let's move to the consent agenda. You have 15 items on the consent agenda. Is there anything that needs to be pulled off?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, please call for the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll move to old business. You have ordinance 25027, water tap and sewer cleanout fee revisions. This is second and final reading.
So moved.
Second. Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, let's move to land use matters. We have rezoning property along January Street. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mayor McFarland and members of the city council. Our one and only public hearing tonight is for a .3 acre parcel located along the east side of January Street, just to the north of Bridge Avenue. You'll see on the map before you, it's just to the north of the commercial uses that are located there along Bridge Avenue, just to the east of New Salem Highway. This property is currently zoned RS8. There was a, there was formerly a single-family home on the property. A permit was obtained last year to build a new structure on the property. The structure, we've been in contact with the applicant, with the owners from an enforcement standpoint. It's either a duplex or approximates a duplex, which is not allowed in the RS8 area. However, it's reinvestment in an area that has not seen a whole lot of reinvestment of late, and the structure, we believe, adds value to the, to the neighborhood. And so we were discussing ways in which the owners could remedy the, the situation, and we suggested that they rezone the property to CL. And so the property directly to the south along Bridge Avenue is already zoned CL, Commercial Local District, and the CL zone is somewhat of a hybrid of a commercial and residential zone. It allows up to four family dwellings. And so if in fact the structure is duplex, it could potentially, if it's rezoned, allow a third dwelling unit on the property. That would be subject to council's approval of a sewer variance if the applicants wish to move forward with a, a third dwelling unit on the property. But with that being said, staff is supportive of the rezoning request as it is consistent with the CL zoning to the south and also could potentially spur additional investment in the area along January Street. The planning commission held a public hearing on this matter on July the 9th and voted at that time to recommend approval of the rezoning request to the city council. The owner of the property could not be here today, but his representative, Ms. Wanda Fryerson, is here if you have any questions for her. I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Blomley? All right, we need to open a, or have a public hearing for this rezoning request. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, if you'll come to the podium, you'll have three minutes if you're representing yourself as an individual, five minutes if you're representing a group like a homeowners association. If you'll keep all of your comments directed to the council, we'll get those questions answered at the end of the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, public hearing's open. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and will now consider on first reading ordinance 25OZ-25. Let's approve.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we have a, on motion, we have a hangar site development contract award. Ms. Smith, this was from our workshop.
That's all right. Good evening. I'm here presenting on behalf of Chad Gerke, who is out of town at a celebration for his family. The airport staff is asking council tonight to award the hangar site development contract for hangar pad development work at the Murfreesboro Municipal Airport. This project is based on anticipated need for corporate and individual hangar space at the Murfreesboro Airport. The contract is for site development and will create an area that will allow for hangars to be built efficiently with all the utilities, drainage, and hangar pads already prepared. The purchasing department received five bids on July 23rd for this project, and Hensley Civil LLC was the lowest responsible and responsive bidder at $1,123,884 plus a 5% ownership contingency for a total of $1,180,800. This bid amount was below our engineer's estimate. Barge Design Services, the engineer of record on this project, has recommended this notice of award. References were verified by both city staff and barge staff. Both received positive responses regarding working with Hensley. The project's construction expense will be funded through a transfer from general fund to airport fund. Tonight, we request approval of the notice of award and subsequent contract to Hensley Civil. I'm here if you have any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Smith?
Does the engineer's estimate?
I don't have the engineer's estimate. I just, Barge City's.
Was it a dollar lower or, you know, $400,000 lower?
I, I don't have the amount, so I would hate to guesstimate. I can get that to you, though, be happy to.
So everything's in order, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
They've provided their bid bond, and when they get their notice of award, they'll provide payment and performance bonds.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, please call the, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, let's move to Old Fort Park Ball Field and Parking renovations, change order one. Ms. Hennessy.
Good evening. Ball Field and Parking renovations at Old Fort Park consists of an artificial turf playing field, stormwater drainage improvements, replacing all the lighting, fencing, backstops, and dugouts. Change order number one officially includes the contingency items encountered to date and adds six days to the contract time. The contingency items included are a new water service and pipe sleeving, removal of dimmed old items, additional asphalt removal, additional safety fencing, reduced silt fencing, and additional rock for the ball field subgrade. The total for the contingency used to date is $84,746 and does not change the total contract amount. This leaves a remaining contingency balance of $60,802. Thank you for the opportunity to present this item, for your consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Hennessy?
Six days, what, what, what does that add to the time? You said six days added to the, what's the length of, for the project? What's the time for the project?
Time.
Well, it adds six days to the project. What is the length of time for the project? When's it gonna be finished?
I'm sorry, still not able to hear.
What's the, the total contract completion date? What's the completion date?
When's it gonna be finished? When is the project gonna be finished?
When's it gonna be done?
I'm sorry.
What, when is the project going to be done?
Oh, end of November at this point.
Okay.
And I apologize.
That's okay. I'm sorry, I wasn't.
I think our mics are, your mic's really low, Bill.
Is it?
Yeah.
Well, let me pull it to the closer.
I can't, I can't really hear.
I was at the ADC today. The work's going really good. It looks really, a lot of progress.
Oh, it looks beautiful. Yeah, I've been out there, it's beautiful. That's a, been very familiar with that park for many years.
Is that in the form of a motion?
Yes.
All right, we have a motion. Bill?
Second.
Second. Dollar, can I get a dollar? Can I get a dollar now? Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
All right, thank you, Brad. All right, let's move to, oh, no, we have the police headquarters. Sorry, wasn't trying to skip over you.
The rear parking area at the police headquarters is comprised of an asphalt paved parking area at the very back of the property, a large stormwater drainage ditch in the middle, and a permeable paver parking area close to the building. This project consists of milling and repaving the asphalt section, adding concrete improvements to the stormwater drainage ditch to mitigate and prevent erosion, adding paper-based gravel to the permeable paver parking area to stabilize it, adding concrete pads at the gate to remediate rutting of the paver system and sealing and striping of the asphalt. These items will be completed by utilizing existing city contracts with asphalt, concrete, and sealing and striping contractors. The estimated cost of these improvements is $150,000 and will be funded by the police department's FY25 CIP. Happy to answer any questions.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, let's move to a street sweeper purchase. Mr. Hillis.
Good evening, Mayor, city council. Just got the, got a staff recommendation here to approve the purchase of an Elgin street sweeper with Sampson equipment. As you guys know, street sweeping is a critical part of our daily operation. We, we, we try to our very best to keep the streets of Murfreesboro clean and the safety of the vehicular and pedestrian traffic as well. This cost of this expense for this sweeper is $326,276 and will be paid for from the FY26 Stormwater Fund, and we're seeking your approval to purchase this street sweeper.
That's an expensive broom you got there.
It is, isn't it?
If no comments, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, let's move to item 22, contract for mulching services amendment one.
Yes, sir. So we need to amend the contract for the mulching services with Terriscape. This contract was set up in 2024 and has a one-year renewal, automatic renewal for it, and we're seeking your approval to do just that. Mulching, most of the mulching that's done here in the city of Murfreesboro, staff tries to do their absolute best to take care of it themselves. But every now and then, we need to contract a little workout, especially for Medical Center Parkway. We try to, with the machine that Terriscape has, they can pull up, blow this mulch in, get out of the street quickly, and so this is the reason for that. The, the price of the contract hasn't changed, it's still $46 per cubic yard, and we estimate somewhere around $51,000 a year for that. I'm here to answer any questions you guys may have.
Mr. Hillis, I'd like to say that our streets look excellent.
Thank you.
You do a great job. I've seen something dead in the street, going one place and coming back is gone, debris in the street. You all do a great job of addressing that.
Thank you.
Very good job.
I appreciate that a great deal. I'll make sure to share that with staff.
And I move for approval, if no comments.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, let's move to item 23, strategic partnership MOUs.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm Steve Gerald, the deputy chief. Pleasure to be here again tonight. And for your consideration is the MOU with our strategic partners. As you're aware, the police department works directly in conjunction with the district attorney's office, the Child Advocacy Center, as well as the Domestic Violence, Sexual Assault Center, and other law enforcement agencies that investigate and prosecute cases involving child sex abuse, sexual assaults, and domestic violence cases. City has a longstanding relationship with those agencies and partners, and we have provided funding in the past. Today, we're asking that you approve the MOUs for the amount of $90,000 for the Child Advocacy Center and $25,000 for the Domestic Violence and Sexual Assault Centers, which will come out of the department's FY26 operating budget. And we ask that you approve the MOUs, and I'll answer any questions you might have.
This goes all the way back to General Weitzel, General Jennings, the county's mayor Ketron, the other municipal mayors met on this a while back, several years ago, three, four years ago, but ultimately, the Child Advocacy Center, Child Advocacy Center, and they're providing a service that if they didn't provide, we would be providing that service. And so Smyrna's doing this, Laverne's doing this, and the county is also contributing, so it's extremely beneficial.
With that said, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Mayor, could I just make a comment here?
Yeah.
They had an open house at the CAC a few months ago, I guess, and there was a bunch of people there, and it was just neat to see how the coordinated effort for this, is, y'all work together so well, and that particular agency needs some expanded facilities, more space, basically. And I just, you know, like us to try to help and facilitate if we can, help them finding some larger facility. They've been looking for an extra space. They're packed in there pretty tight to do very serious work for our community, and just wanted to give them a little shout-out, but also the fact that, you know, we as a community need to provide them with better facilities and better space.
I'm sure they would be appreciative of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
All right, let's move to item 24, purchase of body armor from Gals LLC.
Next, your consideration is the approval to purchase 125 sets of body armor and carriers from Gals LLC. It's the recommendation that body armor be replaced every five years, and the 125 sets of armor is part of our normal rotating replacement plan for the department. The cost for these replacements is $235,024 and will be funded by the department's FY26 operating budget, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions?
When you all put on that armor, does that add about 40 pounds to you?
It doesn't add, it doesn't add that much weight. It does add weight.
I know when I touch you all, that almost breaks my hand, it's hard.
That's, well.
The weights I bring to you, Madeline.
That's deputy chief's abs that you're hitting.
I told her last time that when she, when she does that, I laugh like the Pillsbury Doughboy.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is, motion, motion is second.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
All right, now we now move into the portion of the Chris Griffith Show, and so we'll start item 25 through 28. This is the, the portion that everyone likes to see road projects being done, so our first road project is Medical Center Parkway Phase Two.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. We do have, we're ready to start Phase Two of Medical Center Parkway. This will basically go from Livy Deering in that area, just near the chop house, all the way around to, to the fountains there at the, at the curve. We would like to use the same approach that we did with Phase One, using the annual contracts. If you'll see there, we saved about 27% in cost based on our engineer's estimate in Phase, Phase One, and we're expecting a similar savings on Phase Two. And of course, just to remind you, the, some of the annual contracts that we have is Rollins Excavating does concrete and excavation utility work. We've got Hawkins that does paving work, Pope Striping does the striping work, so it's split out amongst several, several contractors. S&amp;W also does signal work for us. So with that, we recommend approval of using the annual contracts and funded from the FY21 and 22 CIP budgets. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
So moved. Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, and Chris, 27% sounds great, but 2.4 million is what you actually saved, and that sounds a whole lot better than 27%. So that was 2.4.
I couldn't do that math quickly in my head.
2.4 million of taxpayer dollars is what you saved on, on doing that route, so. All right, let's move to professional services contract for southeast broad widening.
Yes, we have finished our traffic study on the section of Southeast Broad Street there between Academy Avenue and Tremont Drive. Our engineer, Kim Lee Horn, has come up with a seven-lane curb and gutter section with grass strips, sidewalks, medians, and, and signal modifications at key intersections. Basically, what we're trying to do there is correct all those lane drops that we have and folks getting caught in what we call lane traps, and, and trying to have to get over. Based on the findings of the studies, staff recommends moving forward with the project and has requested a full design contract for the corridor. The proposed contract includes survey work, design permitting, environmental compliance, T-Doc coordination, of course, and sets of state route, traffic signal design, and right-of-way acquisition assistance. Kim Lee Horn's proposal was for $767,400 to complete the scope of work assigned. The cost of the work will be funded by the FY25 CIP budget and reallocated funds from completed projects. Be happy to answer any questions on it.
Where's Academy at? He said Tremont and Academy.
Academy's where you turn to go to Bradley.
Okay.
Yeah. It, it's right there around Martin Luther King Jr., where it intersects there. Yeah, I had to ask those two streets myself, so.
So moved. Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Stain.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
All right, let's move to the developers agreement for Armory Drive.
Yes, sir. This is a new developers agreement with Green Trails Incorporated for the Armory Drive Realignment Project. If you'll remember, T-Doc recommended several improvements there at Thompson Lane and Old Fort Parkway ahead of any significant work on, on Old Fort, and this is the, the last one that we have on our list to do. It's relocating Armory Drive through the YMCA parking lot. We've met with the, the proposed developer of, of this project, and, and we've come up with this agreement where basically, they donate the right-of-way and do the initial excavation work and some of the initial utility work, and then we'll come in and, and place the curb and gutter, asphalt, and sidewalks for it. Once we have, if, if you approve this agreement, we'll amend our original design contract with our current designer, and we'll, we'll finish the entire route connecting back to existing. And so this, this will essentially, once we have the entire project done, this will close where Armory Drive comes out now, and it'll come out to a signalized intersection. The city's portion of the work is estimated at about $415,000 and will be funded by the FY22 and 25 CIP budgets. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
So moved.
Taken.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shack.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, let's move to Mason Brooks Developer Agreement Amendment Number One.
Yes, sir. This is, uh, an amendment, Alcorn Properties, while they were, uh, building the section of Cherry Lane there, uh, off from Florence Road, uh, it made sense for them to do some additional grading, uh, for the entire five-lane section, even though they were only building a two-lane section for 1,365 feet, uh, through the subdivision. Uh, they've, uh, requested, and we've reviewed the request, and the city engineer supports the, uh, de- decision, uh, awarding them an additional $183,594 in their cost to do that work. Lot of it was, uh, rock, and so that, um, it was just easier to excavate all of it, uh, at once. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Griffith. All right, we have, uh, funding for T-Dot statewide partnership program, Memorial Boulevard widening. And I look back at my records, and I think this will be the first time that we've had a request from a new employee that is of this expense, so, congrats, Mr. Smith. You're, you're in the record books in Murfreesboro.
Thank you. Last roadway project for the night, right?
That's right.
Um, Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you for, uh, for having me. Lee Smith, new, uh, Deputy Transportation Director. I'm here to present a funding proposal for Memorial Boulevard widening. Uh, it's a priority corridor on 2040, uh, major transportation plan, and the initiative, this initiative's part of, uh, T-Dot statewide partnership program. Um, this allows us to leverage, uh, state funding for transformative infrastructure improvements. Um, currently, Memorial Boulevard is a two-lane arterial road, uh, with shoulders, and it posts a speed limit of 45 miles an hour. It serves a vital connector, as a vital connector for our community, uh, but it has limited capacity, uh, has some safety issues with, uh, lack of pedestrian infrastructure, and creates, uh, safety mobility challenges. There's, we counted 294 crashes out there for a five-year period, one fatality, one, uh, serious injury crash. Um, but the proposal, uh, will expand the corridor from Thompson Lane to the Walter Hill Bridge to a five-lane section, curb and gutter, sidewalks, and a multi-use path. Uh, enhance access to the, uh, Segal Soccer Complex, um, accommodate some traffic that'll be from the new phase of Cherry Lane, Phase Two, Three A, Three B. Um, likely include a, uh, we'll eventually have a signal at the V A there, and also Central Valley Road. Um, the, the way that these T-Dot funding formula works, we're recommending a total commitment of $25 million. We've already have 3.9 million allocated, and then, uh, this request is for 21 million for the future, out of the future borrow. Um, and this importantly represents 40% of the total cost of the project at, uh, $62.9 million. Um, so this is a strategic investment, and, uh, for connectivity, safety, and long-term growth. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion is second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Yep.
All right, let's move to board and commission appointments. You have the disciplinary review board. Uh, staff's recommending all three members to be, uh, reappointed.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
That board meets twice a year, doesn't it?
I think they only meet if there's pending, um, they have to meet once at least, go ahead.
They meet twice a year. Once in the spring, once in the fall, typically, just to handle business, and they, otherwise, they only meet if there's a disciplinary hearing that comes before them.
Yep.
And when they have those, uh, disagreements, does that come to the council, or they just?
No. No, it, it, it's an independent body that makes determinations about, uh, in situations where, um, an employee's employment has been terminated, and they have the right, um, if they are, um, if it, if they're a full-time employee and they've been with the city for more than a year, they have the right to appeal a termination to the disciplinary board, disciplinary review board.
Yeah, I used to be on that committee, I just wanted to have it changed.
All right, let's move to Historic Zoning Commission. You have four appointments. Um, so three of these is, all came through our planning department. Mr. Busey applied for a previous position about a year ago, but we typically don't have this much turnover on a board, but we, um, going through our records, and that was really why I had asked about our last council meeting. We have three members that moved out of the city. Um, so there's three appointments to put those with city residents, and then, uh, Ms. Linda Anderson, and, and by the way, also want to say this, Jim Thompson, David Becker, and Linda Anderson so, all served the Historical Zoning Commission for well over 20-plus years, so.
Cumulative, I, I was there the other day at the meeting, and it was, uh, cumulative, almost 80 years of, of service to our community.
Yep.
Uh, and, and it was, uh, a really special, these folks have done a lot for our community, particularly maintaining the downtown historic district, and, and, uh, and there was something before them, and it was neat to see how they interacted. They all had a perspective and a, uh, something to contribute to what was before them. So it just reminded me of how fortunate we are to have competent people that step up to serve on our boards and commissions, but it's unusual to have this many replacements in one.
And then Ms. Anderson, uh, so, Mr. Becker, Mr. Thompson, and, uh, Ms. Anderson retired, but also Bill Jakes, who is a longtime downtown member, business is still downtown. Bill moved across the city line, so he can see the city, but he's not in the city, and, and so.
He's an annex, we can't.
I don't know if we want to bring that up, but upon his request. Uh, so Mr. Busey has, uh, agreed to step down to his position. So those are your four recommendations.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, you have two beer permits.
Yes, we have one for a new restaurant located at 710 Memorial Boulevard, Suite 220, and a special event permit for Saint Rosa Lima Church for the International Festival on September 14th. Both applicants submit our requirements, and we recommend for approval pending any final building and codes inspections.
Second.
Motion is second, please call the roll.